Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. My favorite thing to do. May we have roll call, please?
Dana.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Montesino.
Here.
Sarmiento.
Here.
Beach, Olson. Rivera.
Here.
Camer.
Everybody's here. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for April 3rd, 2018. Item three, we have presentations and oral communications from the public and the Planning Commission. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the Planning Commission on any item not on the agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except that any commissioner may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to Planning Commission will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting, or referred to staff for clarification and report. Any commissioner may place matters brought up under oral communications on a future agenda. All speakers are asked to fill out a card and leave it at the podium, announce their name and address in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. So, do we have any oral communications from the public on any item not currently on the Seeing none, I will bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioners Sarmiento?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I would like to thank the city and really give them just kudos for the celebration that they hosted at the Plaza on Friday. It was well-attended. It was very nice. Those cupcakes were beautiful and very tasty, and so was the high school band. Well, they weren't high school, right? It's the Watsonville Band, yes. They were excellent, and so were the mariachis. What I would also like to point out that today at the Watsonville Library, we had the county health ranking, which was announced by United Way, by ASR, which is Applied Survey Research, and First Five, talking about where the county is as a whole when it comes to health for children, teens and adults, and as far as obesity, birth rates, and anything in particular to health. And although the county is doing much better overall, the city, our young people are now faring as well, and we continue to have a high number of teen pregnancies. And I think that's something that, as a city, we need to work more closely together with these agencies to address that issue because it has an impact on education, on jobs, on the economy, on the family finances. So, I would like to see if maybe we can press the City Council to be more involved in those events. And also, the last thing that I would like to announce that is coming up on April 28th, that the Mayor, Laurel Hurst, in collaboration with Community Action Board and SCORE, which is the Santa Cruz County Community Coalition to Overcome Racism, and a couple of local organizers, including myself, are putting together a film and a workshop here at the City Community Room. It's Saturday, April 28th, and it's Immigration is a Human Right. So, it's a film with opportunity for discussion and learning about migration and how it's been done for so many years, and also the impact on resources and human capital. So, I'd like to invite the community and also the Planning Commissioner, Commissioners, to attend this workshop here on Saturday, April 28th, starting at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Montesino?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Nope, nothing to report.
Commissioner Dana?
I would just like to say how happy I am to see two candidates run for the vacant seat in the Second District. I think four people applied and two people actually qualified. One is here on our Planning Commission and another is Arilio Gonzalez. So, I'm very happy. It's really good for our community. We have a vacancy. That vacancy wasn't appointed by the other council members. The folks of the Second District will elect their own council person. So, kudos to those that decided to run.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rivera?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple things. I wanted to reiterate what Commissioner Sarmiento said about the celebration last Friday, the 150th commemoration of Watsonville's cityhood. It was wonderful and well-attended and enjoyed by everybody that was there. Another thing that I attended was a Transportation Justice Conference, and that was in mid-March. The conference featured four panels of experts and focused on solutions to traffic issues and alternative transportation options. The topics that were covered ranged from funding and improving bus transit, and that was presented by our own Commissioner Montesino, and also to encourage infrastructure improvements for safer walking and bicycling throughout the county. There were discussions about barriers and solutions to providing affordable housing. There was a presentation by Councilmember Rebecca Garcia on that topic and highlighting the programs that the City of Watsonville has. And yay for Watsonville because we're the only city that has a lot of those programs to help first-time homebuyers. And then, they also had a discussion about unbundling the cost of parking from housing costs, possibly to reduce the cost of housing if you're not going to be, if you don't have the cars that would, you know, warrant you, the parking, warrant the parking, the mandatory parking spaces. So, that was a really great conference, and it involved members throughout the county, council members, and just representatives from different organizations. It was really wonderful. The other thing I want to encourage people to go to Ms. Miriam, and I went to the Paharo Gallery opening of the current exhibit. I'm gonna hold this up. It's a fantastic exhibit. The Paharo Gallery is right over here on Sutton Street, what's the, 37 Sutton Street, and it's open Wednesday through Friday from 11:00 to 4:00, sorry, Wednesday through Sunday, 11:00 to 4:00. And the current exhibit is phenomenal. It has all these curious, it's hard to describe, but it has many things that are intriguing and pique your curiosity, and it's just a phenomenal place. So, if you've never been there, I highly encourage you to go. This was an incredible exhibit, and it goes on until May 13th. So, thank you very much. Next, it looks like we have item number four, which is the Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion on approving the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. So, the motion was made by Commissioner Montesino and seconded by Commissioner Sarmiento. May we have roll call, please?
Dana.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Montesino.
Yes.
Sarmiento.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Camer.
Yes. The motion was approved unanimously, and I wanted to announce, we're going to go on to item five, which is the public hearing, and there's going to be a change to the agenda. The requested change was to switch items A and B, so to consider item B first, which is the application for the major subdivision on 655 Rodriguez, and to put that first and then to put the item A, which is the special use permit, or special permit for the high school facilities, to put that second. So, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, the motion was made by Commissioner Montesino and seconded by Commissioner Sarmiento. May we have roll call on that, please?
Dana.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Montesino.
Yes.
Sarmiento.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Camer.
Yes. So, the motion is passed unanimously. So, we will move on to item B, and item B is a public hearing to consider recommendation to City Council on an application for a major subdivision with design review and environmental review, PP 2017-61, to subdivide a multiple residential high-density parcel and construct five townhome units at 655 Rodriguez Street, APN 018-13-126, filed by Raed Farhat, applicant and property owner. And maybe start, please, with a staff report.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners and Chair Camer. My name is Edgar Maravilla, and today I will be presenting 655 Rodriguez Street. The parcel at 655 Rodriguez Street is 15,540 square feet. It is Zone RM3 for high-density residential, and it is currently being used as an industrial warehouse building, and there's actually two industrial buildings on that site. The applicant's proposing to redevelop the site and essentially subdivide it into six separate parcels to accommodate the construction of five townhomes. And I will go over the project throughout the presentation, but I just thought I would lay down that foundation for all of you. So, throughout my presentation, I will go ahead and give you an overview, project location, the review process, the requirements, the proposed floor plan, development requirements, and the conditions of approval. During your screen, you will see 655 Rodriguez Street. It is shaded in gray, and you will notice that it is a double furnished lot. So, it fronts on Rodriguez Street, and it also fronts on Sixth Street. This is to give you a more of a visual simulation of what those frontages look like. On Sixth Street there, and then towards the bottom, you'll see Rodriguez Street, and you get to see the two warehouse buildings that are currently there. One of them has the pink-orange line going through it, and the other one is adjacent to that building. This here is more of a bird-eye view. Again, this shows you the two warehouse buildings, one of them with the red roof and the other one with the gray roof. Per our general plan, this site is Zone RHD, residential high-density. Per our zoning, it is Zone RM3, multiple residential high-density. So, we analyzed the site and we acknowledged that it is meant for residential projects, even though it is currently being used as a warehouse. The process, why am I here today? So, this project itself is principally permitted in the RM3 zoning district, subject to a design review. However, the applicant is proposing to create six separate parcels. As such, it becomes a major subdivision, and now they're required to provide a tentative map that shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission, with recommendations to City Council for final action. This here, in the, you see in the orange boundary, you'll see currently what's existing there. It provides a footprint of the two warehouse buildings. And this here is what's being proposed. You'll see some green boundaries as well as a blue one. The green ones, those are all the proposed townhomes. You'll see that there are four towards the rear of the parcel, and those are proposed to be attached, so they will be essentially sharing a wall. The one that, the standalone detached townhome that fronts on Sixth Street, yeah, so it fronts on Sixth Street, and that is the fifth townhome that is being proposed. The area in blue, that is the common space, and that common space is proposed to be kept in line by the Homeowner Association, and you'll see there that there are four proposed visitor parking spaces. Additionally, there is a lawn space, and that lawn space would be shared and used in commonality by all the residents of this subdivision. Additionally, I also want to point out that the parcel there towards the front on Sixth Street, the proposed parcel, that is given more of a single-family look, and that was done with the intention of keeping in line with the existing characteristics of the neighborhood on Sixth Street. So, if you were to be walking on Sixth Street, it would appear to be a single-family home with the four townhomes at the rear. You will also see that on the attached townhomes, that there is an open space, a private open space of 305 square feet, and that was done because our requirements require that this project provide a minimum of 200 square feet of open space for each unit. The standalone unit on Sixth Street, they have a side yard of about 357 square feet. Throughout the project, you will also see some landscaping, and that's done because our requirements require this site to have a minimum of 20% landscaping. So, here you'll see the attached townhome, the floor plan, and I only provide one floor plan because these units will be a mirror image of one another. As I mentioned, they will be sharing a wall. And here you'll see that they have a double-car garage, a living room, kitchen, hallway, and as you go upstairs, you'll see four rooms, three of which will be bedrooms, and one of which will be an office loft. Here you'll see the floor plan for the detached townhome. Here you'll notice that, obviously, the unit is a bit bigger. There is a porch in the front, and again, that was made with the purpose of providing the single-family feel to that unit. They will have a dining room, a living room, a kitchen, and as you go upstairs, they will have four rooms, all of which will be bedrooms. This here is a simulation of the attached townhomes. As I mentioned, they will be sharing a wall, so this just kind of gives you that mirror image of one another, as I mentioned earlier. Moving on to the elevations, here you'll see in the front, the top image, that is for the front elevation of the attached townhomes. You'll notice that there is a roof pitch over each of the garages, and that was done to give more of a residential characteristics to the project. You will also notice that over the garage, there is a overhang, again, just to provide more design, because a simple, small design can go a long way. At the bottom, you'll see that is the rear elevation, and again, they have many windows, again, keeping in line with the design and really providing a more of a modern look and staying away from your typical just boxy homes that we often see. This here provides the elevation down the left, is the left side of the attached townhomes, and the right is the right side of the attached townhomes. I also want to point out that all of these units will be at about 27.8 feet in height, well within our requirement of 28 feet. This simulation here, it gives you the elevation for the standalone detached townhome that will front on Sixth Street. Again, I want to highlight the porch there, towards my top left-hand corner where it says "front." That's what it will look like fronting on Sixth Street. So, I have to mention, if you're walking, it looks like a single-family home. And towards the bottom, you'll see a rear. You'll see the rear elevation, and there you'll see that they have a three-car garage. And the reason for that is they are proposing four bedrooms. Unlike the other units that are proposing three bedrooms, this unit itself has to provide a three-car garage. You'll also see on the top right-hand side, the left-side elevation, and on the bottom right-hand side, the right-side elevation. This project as proposed meets our minimum requirements. Density-wise, it is providing the equivalence of 14 units per acre. Parking space, they are providing four visitor spaces, and each unit will have a two-car garage, with the exception of the detached townhome that fronts on Sixth Street, which will have a three-car garage. Driveway access, the driveway access will be in through Rodriguez Street, and it will be made up to code per Public Works Department, and it will be accessible through our ADA compliance requirements. Additionally, storage space, each of these units is being provided 210 square feet of storage space within the garage, and they're all within our minimum public slash private open space. They all have the minimum of 200 square feet of open space, and as I mentioned, they also have the private lawn of about 850 square feet that they will share. Moving on to landscaping, the site provides a minimum of 20% landscaping, which is our requirement, and they will also provide an irrigation plan to ensure that any vegetation that is planted on-site, it stays alive. Additionally, all the vegetation and any landscaping planted there will be drought-tolerant per state of California, and they are providing 13 new trees, which is very exciting because we all know that the City of Watsonville needs trees. Per the environmental review, this project is a category exempted through Class 32, Section 15332, and Class 3, Section 153003, as the project is an infill development, and the new construction consists of not more than six units. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the major subdivision with design review, environmental review, and tentative map application, PP 2017-61, for the construction of five townhomes at 655 Rodriguez Street, based on the attached findings and conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a few. So, are these going to be for sale or for rentals? Do we know?
I'm not 100% sure currently. I do know that they are subdividing them, so usually that, usually they get sold when that happens.
Okay.
But we can ask the applicant? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
And just maybe a process question, because I saw in the background the sheet that I have in front of me. So, this applicant started March 1st, so more than a year ago. Is it custom to take this long?
It's really on a case-by-case basis. It depends on what they propose, how long they provide, let's say they submit something to us, and it doesn't meet the code, so we send it back to them, and depending on their designer, their architect, and then they would have to coordinate with one another and get back to us. Then we keep going back and forth essentially until we get a project that we can bring up here that's presentable for all of you.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sarmiento?
Yes, thank you. So, you did say that in addition to the common space, open space, there are individual spaces for each townhouse? A backyard or a patio or some sort?
Yes, that is correct. Let me go back on my presentation, and each, at least the attached townhomes, they will have 305 square feet towards the rear of the townhome of private space, and the detached townhome will have a side yard there of about 350 square feet. So, if you look at the green boundary lines, you'll see that towards the rear where it says "slab," it also says "open space, 305 square feet."
Okay. And I'm trying to remember, what parks, other than Ramsey Park, would be the closest?
I'm not 100% sure. I wouldn't want to lie to you, but I could get back into some research for you.
Okay. There's a little park?
Not Marinovich, is it? Is it Marinovich?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, that's further. No, I was talking about, mm-hmm. Okay.
I do want to highlight, there is the open lawn area there of about 800 square feet, and they will also have a bench there for people to kind of hang out and really enjoy a little bit of the open space there. Next to the visitor parking space, you'll see the lawn.
That's it. Thank you.
Other questions for staff?
Oh, excuse me. I have one more.
No, go ahead.
Sorry. Okay. So, this was, the unit was, wasn't it baseball or pitching, something that was used for a while?
No, I don't, I don't think that ever, I don't think they carried forward. It was approved by Planning Commission. I don't even think they got to the building permit stage on that.
But that, prior to that, it was also an area where they were growing illegal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That was under previous ownership, to let you know.
I don't know. Something illegal.
I just, I have a question that it's probably silly. Six parcels, so the sixth parcel is the blue outlined space that includes the entrance and exit, and then all the green space, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. That is where the lawn and the visitor parking space would be in, and that's where people would derive, or tenants there would derive access into their homes.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay. We will then move on to the applicant presentation, and Mr. Farhat, are you here? Yes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners. Edgar did a good job of explaining the project, so I'm not going into any more detail. Just to answer some of the questions that you guys had, why it takes a year, small projects like this, that's frustrating that it does take this long, but that's part of development with regards to whether for rent, for sale. This is just, we still have a process to go. This is for the tentative map. We still have to get the final map, and we still have to go through City Council. So, depending on how long that process takes and what the market conditions are at that time, we will decide at that time whether we're going to rent them or sell them. But we are, like Edgar mentioned, they are individual parcels, so they do have the option to sell. We just don't know yet, depending on what the market does at the time. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm basically taking a blighted area, cleaning it up. Before the marijuana that was being done there, it was a, I think, Better Brands facility that was there for years, and it's just, we use it as warehouse space for our equipment and material.
Other questions for Mr. Farhat? Commissioner Rivera and then Sarmiento?
I mean, this might be more for staff than for Raed, but if, Raed, if you do decide to sell these as opposed to holding on to them, is there a requirement from the city that there is a homeowners association, because the open space is supposed to be taken care of by homeowners association, right?
I think regardless whether I sell them or keep them, the homeowners association will be there because it's going to own the sixth parcel, so there will be homeowners association, homeowners association dues. If we do keep them as rentals, we would still have to pay into the association.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Sarmiento?
Actually, that was going to be my question. I did notice that a lot of homes, townhouses, that do have HOA tend to keep up with the maintenance and the plants, and it just looks a lot better. So, that was going to be my question. But they are pretty large, right? They're four bedrooms, so definitely we're looking at a medium to higher income level if they are going to be for sale.
Considering the location where they're at, they won't be able to get a higher income. Things are expensive. I mean, everything in Watsonville is expensive these days, just because of the location where it's at. I don't think they'll warrant a high price. It'd probably be actually less than some of the current townhomes that are for sale now, just because of the location. So, we'll see, I guess, what the market dictates at the time once they're built.
Okay. So, this may be kind of early, but what do you estimate the HOA fees may be in the event that you do sell it, or, I mean, even if they're rentals?
It is early, but I would say based on other townhomes that we've built, I would say probably between 150 and 200 a unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Farhat? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up now to the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? Please approach and state your name and your address, and then go ahead. You'll have three minutes to give your comments.
Yes, good evening. My name is Bill Beecher. I'm from Aptos, and, but I'm the Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee for Mezural. So, I've been very actively involved with the school system here and putting in new This will- This will put some more pressure on Radcliffe School, which is adjacent to this project. Radcliffe is already busing students to other campuses because they don't have enough room. The pre-K kids only go half a day because there aren't enough classrooms. And sometime in the past, it turned out the city, working with the school district, made available land so we could increase Radcliffe at that time. And that really put Radcliffe back into being a school. If you look at an overhead map behind Radcliffe, you'll see that there are three parking areas, two of which don't get used much at all. One of them, about the only people who park there are the homeless, and the police department has to chase them out as well as chase them off from our campus. I'm proposing that we need to work in concert between the school district and the city to look forward to putting in more classrooms. And it would be really neat to have the city take one of those parking areas that's in the center of the block and isn't used, and let the district use it for putting in additional classrooms. So that's a proposal for you that as you add more and more housing, we don't have enough classrooms. We need some help from you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Madam Chair, honorable commission members. My name's Kim DeSerpia, and I'm on the Paharo Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees. And I thank you for your work and your volunteering for this commission. In terms, I'm a social worker. It's what I do every day on the job. And I help people, including people with disabilities, families with young children, and seniors try to find housing in this very horrible housing market that we find ourselves in here in Santa Cruz County, where people on fixed incomes, even oftentimes with Section 8 vouchers that I've helped procure for them, I can't find a single place where that will accept a Section 8 voucher. And certainly for people on a very fixed income, it's nearly impossible to find housing. So I guess what I'd like to just ask you to consider is that any time a new development go in, that a portion of it is either earmarked for someone with disabilities or somebody who needs affordable housing, whether that be a geriatric person or a family with kids. So I don't know if that, I don't really know housing policy very well down here, and so I just want to make a plea to you as a social worker that this is something that's really very important for our citizens. And then separately, any time a new development goes in, I guess, as a Paharo Valley Unified Trustee, I'd like to make a plea to consider the fact that we need more schools, all of our schools, every one of them is completely full. And we don't have enough classrooms for the amount of kids that will come with housing development. So if we could work together, the district and your staff, it would be very helpful. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other members of the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, we will move back to the discussion from the commission. Commissioner Sarmiento, were you raising your hand? No, okay. Commissioner Montesino?
You know, thank you for those comments. And there's actually a commission stated for the partnership that the city and the school district, actually a pretty great place because we are in a need strain of our schools. We are, you know, we just have too many kids. We do need schools. That's the next topic we're going to talk about, finishing up some due process on the school, PB High School. But I want to move this item, I mean, for the city needs, and in a blighted area, it looks like a good project, so I want to move that item forward.
Do we have a second?
Second, I'd like to add something. I think it's a very innovative product. I really like it. You're taking an area, I remember when that was an egg place years and years ago. So you're really solving a couple of problems. Number one, I like it. I like what you've designed there. Number two, I think it's great that you're investing in that area. That's the oldest housing inventory we have in the city in that particular neighborhood, so it's very good to see developers come into these areas and put a little bit of money into an area that needs it. And then the third is, we obviously need housing. I agree, we have schooling problems. We have a lot of problems, unfortunately, but they're all solvable. And we are, I think the city's making a good attempt to really get some housing in here. And I think, I hope the school district will do the same with the issue that will come with the housing. But I like this project and I will second my support for it.
We have a motion and a second. May we have roll call, please? Dana?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Sarmiento?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes. Motion passes. And I just wanted to make a comment. I wanted to thank you, Mr. Farhat, for your, again, I concur with what Commissioner Dana said. You do innovative projects, and I commend you for going into these areas and making them more beautiful and putting in the landscaping. And I know you have several projects around town, so thank you for that again.
All right, we're going to be moving on to the second item on our agenda, which is, I'm going to second here. The next item is a public hearing to consider recommendation to the city council on an application for an amendment to the coastal development permit, special use permit with design review number 00-28, CDP number 00-28, PP 2017-340, to allow the construction of upgraded and new athletic field facilities on an eight plus or minus acre portion of the existing Paharo Valley High School campus at 500 Harkins Slough Road, APM 018-281-63, filed by the Paharo Valley Unified School District applicant and property owner. Maybe have the staff report, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Chair Kramer, and members of the public. I'm Justin Meek, principal planner for the city of Watsonville. And now this is my staff report for this particular project. As my way of overview, during my presentation, I'll give you a brief background on the history of the project site, just to give you a sense of the original approvals and why you have this project before you today. Touch on the project location, of course, because it's in the coastal zone, were the requirements for a coastal development permit, brief description of the project description, highlighting the issues that were analyzed and found to be consistent with the coastal program, just a little preview of what to expect, noting the environmental review and how that was informed some of the new conditions for the permit and the required findings that need to be made to support approval of the project. So the original high school was approved back in 2001. CDP, as we mentioned before, number 00-28, was approved by resolution 171-01. And that was for a high school of 2,200 students with 10 buildings that total approximately just over 200,000 square feet of development. The overall site is roughly 70 acres, but it was clustered to the center of it within a development envelope of roughly 33 acres. The site, the project did not include regulation stadiums or facilities. It did have some practice fields to the south of the existing campus and north of Harkins Slough Road. At that time, and just by way of context, this was the culmination of a lot of efforts that started from what I gathered in my research in the 1980s, when the district was doing different site and alternative analyses to find, and they looked at a variety of places all in and around Watsonville, and finally settled on this to facilitate this project. There were major amendments to the local coastal program that had to be approved prior to this. There was even an MOU that the city entered into with the Coastal Commission and the county about restricting annexations west of Highway 1 and also extensions of utilities, again, to restrict the amount of development that could occur in that area. More recently, in 2012, the district prepared a facility plans, and that identified a number of projects district-wide for future funding. In the summer of that same year, they passed a resolution ordering for a ballot measure to be put on the, to authorize the issuance of a bond on the ballot. And then later that same year, in November of 2012, Measure L was passed. And that identified projects, again, throughout the district. And for the Paharo Valley High School, it included playfields, upgraded playfields amongst other things. Two years later, they had conceptual plans drawn up for a sports field project. This was going to be located to the north of the existing campus, north of the parking lot, on roughly a 10-acre site. That project did not move forward. This past year, in consultation apart with city staff, they settled on working within the existing footprint, and that's the project before you today. This is just a schematic diagram that the district prepared for their presentation to their board some time ago. The district, because they're the lead agency per SEQA, they prepared an EIR for the athletic field project. Comment letters were provided by the Coastal Commission staff as well as city. We both clarified that an amendment to the original coastal development permit for the high school was required to permit the project. There was a letter from Caltrans. One of the things that they highlighted that the district is subject to airport and land use laws. And the WPA, the Watsonville Pilots Association, they made references to the court cases against the city based off of airport and land use laws, and indicated that stringent airport and land use controls do apply to this project. The district and WPA privately met and ultimately came to an settlement agreement. And per this agreement, they outlined certain conditions that were proposed by, I believe, WPA and agreed to by the district. Part of it was that the WPA would support the project, and they would jointly request a letter from Caltrans. In response to that joint request, the city received a letter from Caltrans Deputy Attorney, and he provided some direction for how to process and approve this project. It spoke to a limited grandfathering. It also spoke to certain criteria that should be used to evaluate the safety, in other words, the number of people per acre that could be allowed for this area. Those conditions were formally included in the final EIR, and the district ultimately adopted that EIR on December 6. Two days later, the district then submitted an application for a CDP with the city. So that's how we got to today. Here's an aerial photo of the existing campus. Obviously, the sports fields are to the south of the campus and bordered by Harkins Slough Road. The project site is within the coastal zone, and the portion of the campus that's the subject of this project is roughly 8 acres. For the benefit yourselves as well as the public, since we don't often have development proposals within the coastal zone, here is the purpose of it. Things I want to highlight is that it is intended to implement LCP, which stands for the Local Coastal Program Land Use Plan and its policies. Many of those policies speak to protecting visual resources, water resources, environmentally sensitive habitat areas. That's some of the key components of the LCP to help implement the Coastal Act. As part of that, it also provides regulations for land development. Any development within the coastal zone is required to obtain what's called a coastal development permit. And the purpose of such a permit is to ensure that the development within that specific coastal zone district is consistent with the land use plan policies and the implementing ordinance, or what we call the coastal zone implementation plan. And again, for reference, for the benefit of those that don't deal with this very often, you can think of the land use plan as being analogous to the city's general plan, where you have goals and policies for development, and the implementation plan as the zoning code with the established regulations. So within the CZ-C zoning district, which this project site is located, there's specific development standards that are identified. Again, those are to protect coastal resources, sensitive habitat, agricultural uses, those are the intent for many of these regulations. For this project, because it's an amendment, it is treated as a modification request, and bullets one and two highlight the, or lists, rather, the two findings that must be made in support of this request, namely that the proposed modification would not lessen or avoid the intended effect of the approved coastal permit, and the modified project would be consistent with the city's certified LCP. And of course, to make that finding, you have to have a long analysis to demonstrate that. Terms of this proposed project, it involves upgrading and installing some new athletic facilities, again, on campus in the area of the existing facilities. So there's two softball fields and a playfield in between as shown on that aerial photo you saw before. That practice field is going to be the location for a new regulation rain track and football field. There's going to be bleachers that extend up the hill towards the campus, and beyond those bleachers would be accessory buildings such as restrooms and a ticket booth and things like that. The softball closest to Harkins Slough Road and the entrance to the campus will be upgraded with home and visitor team dugouts and things like that. Here's, it's hard to read, and hopefully the packet you got better communicated the site plan, but this is just the general site plan showing the location of all the facilities and just a quick cross profile of the bleachers and what that will look like. This is a list of all of the issues that were addressed in the staff report and found to be consistent with the development regulations and standards within the local coastal program implementation plan. And to help facilitate understanding how it's consistent, staff also put together a consistency matrix listing each of the sections in the, basically the zoning code, and what the issue was, how was consistent with that particular issue. And if you have questions on specific ones, I'll go into it, but I didn't want to go into each and every one unless you did have questions. As I mentioned before, the SEQA document prepared for this project was done by the district. They're the lead agency. There was, I'm just noting that the original project, the main takeaway here is that the mitigation measures for the original project were incorporated as conditions of approval for the CDP, and that the subsequent EIR for this project, conditions of mitigation measures also have been incorporated as conditions of approval for the amended permit. Both documents did not identify any significant unavoidable impacts. All could be mitigated that were identified. For your reference, here's a list of the new conditions. The ones related to the settlement agreement between the WPA and referenced as preconditions by the Caltrans Deputy Attorney are number 101 through 105. The ones that were otherwise in the EIR are listed through 106 through 121. And a few other additional measures or conditions were added by staff to ensure consistency with permit requirements. One more needs to be added. There was an operation maintenance reporting plan for the lift station, and that should also included for stormwater control facilities, too. So one additional condition is being proposed to be added to the resolution. So as condition, the planning commission may make findings in support of this project, that the proposed modification would not lessen or avoid the intended effect of the approved coastal development permit, and that the modified project would be consistent with the LCP. So staff recommends that you adopt resolution recommending city council approval of the amendment to CDP number 00-21 to allow construction of upgraded and new athletic facilities. field facilities on an acre portion of the existing campus located at 800 Harkins Loue Road. With that, I conclude my report and open up to any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Montesino?
I have a few. So just process-wise, what's the next step? Does it have to go to the coastal commission for approval, or does, or just the city council, and then it gets passed on to the project?
So you make a recommendation council. Council would be the decision-making body. So because we have a certified local coastal program, the authority to approve permits are delegated to the local agency. It's potentially appealable to the coastal commission. They would have to identify that there are substantial issues that were not properly addressed in our analysis for them to take it on. So for example, for the original high school, that was, there were, appeal was made to the coastal commission. There was a lot of back-and-forth correspondence. You saw that in the staff report, the letters between the commission and staff and the district and back-and-forth, clarifying how the district was going to conform with the requirements as established in the implementation plan. And ultimately, the coastal commission did not take up the appeal and were satisfied with those explanations.
Thank you.
But hopefully, we don't have to go through that same thing.
Yeah, but I want to thank you for the report. It's really thorough. It gave us a lot of background. I knew some of it, but now I know. My other, my other question is, well, two questions. One about the trail, because on the, on the big project, there was talk about having the trail and having some drop-off parking over at the airport side of it. Is that still in the works, or?
So I think you're thinking of some conceptual design ideas for, I know Public Works has been coming up with conceptual design ideas for extending a trail along the border of the campus towards Airport Boulevard, and that is still in the works, but that's not part of this project.
Okay. And mitigation on parking, because as it is, is right now, it's, we're packed in. I mean, I'm a bus driver, and whenever I go to the school, it's just, you know, hard to get there now with an added field with now, and even an event that people are going to be, you know, even the first game, you know, I don't have any kids there yet, but I want to go to the, you know, I'm going to go to the first game, but how, is there some kind of mitigation of parking, because, or walkover, just, you know, I know the city had plans to upgrade, you know, but we lost some of the funding through the RTC of making a walkway on the, over the bridge, or is there any side in works to deal with, so, you know, mitigate?
Yeah, so that was identified as a potential impact in the EIR, and there's a mitigation measure called a traffic management plan, and it requires the district to prepare a traffic management plan to manage traffic on game days. Components shall include directional guide signs on to on-campus parking areas, no parking signs along Harkins Loue Road, people directing attendees to the parking areas, and traffic control at school driveway signs. May also be beneficial during the initial home games of a season in order to remind attendees of these rules and procedures. While traffic management plan may not fully alleviate the traffic congestion before or after games, it can reduce its severity to a much more manageable level. The applicants shall submit the traffic management plan to the city engineer for review and approval prior to implementation. So engineering staff and will have an opportunity to, again, review and approve and make modifications to it as they deem necessary.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Sarmiento?
It's sort of following on the question that Commissioner Montesino had about the traffic. In the event that there is an emergency, what, would that be the school proposing a plan? Because I live really close by, and it is exciting that this is moving forward, but at the same time, when they have games, what will the impact be? Not only, let's say, if there's an emergency on campus while there's a game, or people leaving, can they, can fire trucks or the police department get through easily, or, I'm not sure, do we have somebody from the school speaking on that?
We do have a representative in the school, and Victor Sandoval is here, so he may wish to address that specific question. I also should note that, you know, that the scheduling of the events will likely be, and again, he can touch more on this, during the daytime during the week, as well as on the weekends, so not necessarily when school is in session. And so that may also help spread out and alleviate traffic congestion at different times.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Would you please come up and present? I don't know, who's the applicant?
I would think it's a community. Anybody can speak to it.
Good evening, Planning Chair and Commissioners. My name is Victor Sandoval. I represent Paharo Valley Unified School District. And tonight, the district is appreciative of all the efforts undertaken by the involved parties and agencies to move this project along. And we are very grateful that the staff's recommendation for the approval of the project. The district wants to be sure that it is complying with the California Department of Transportation's correspondence and recommendations, and the approval of the project, as well as our published SEQA document. Therefore, our, the only comment that is, as a request, is to ensure that the language of the staff report sent to the city, council aligns with the terms set forth with CDOA's letter such agreed upon limits and caps of the annual number of special events that can occur or be held in the stadium. We worked really hard with the stakeholders and obtained support from the interested agencies based on the agreed upon terms, and we want to make sure that they are uniformly reflected across the pertinent documents. So I think that kind of tells you, you know, we're kind of trying to soften the blow overall. Thank you.
Do we have questions? Is, you're the only applicant? I mean, can you stay, please? Are you the, you're the?
Just a little harder hearing, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're the representative from the district, so you're the only one here representing the district, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the district representative?
No, I think just a comment. I, you know, I want to thank just the whole district as a whole for putting this project forward at the end. I know, I would have wished it was the original project, but I know, you know, friction is always, but I'm glad you were finally able to get here, and it's, you know, it's a community, you know, going to be highlighted for many, many years. Thank you.
You. Other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. I would like to open it up to a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to step forward and speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Kirkish from the law firm of Whitworth Parkin. We represent the Watsonville Pilots Association, and we support this project and hope that you recommend approval to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good evening again, Bill Beecher. I started working on this in 2010 as part of the facilities committee, looking at what we needed for the district. And you can't understand how thrilled I am that you guys are working on this tonight, because it's been eight years. A year and a half ago, I got beat up by the grand jury going, what's going on with Measure L? You know, and how do you explain to the parents and the teachers that have come to board meetings going, what's happening with PV High? And the trustees, myself, have taken a heck of a beating, and you do what you got to do, and we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak?
And Kim DeSerphe, Paharo Valley Unified School District trustee for the Aptos area. Paharo Valley High School was built in 2004-2005 school year. The first set of students occupied the halls there in 2006, and in fact, they're having their 10-year class reunion this year, and we congratulate them. But there's been 10 years of kids who have gone through that campus who did not have equitable facilities. 10 years of kids who ran laps on the pavement in the parking lot because they didn't have a proper track to run on. 10 years of kids who played football at either Aptos or Cabrillo, who didn't have a snack shack and their boosters couldn't raise the adequate money. They'd have to put up a Costco table to sell their snacks at football games. In 2012, I was very active and helped to campaign Measure L because we knew we needed to do about $350 million worth of basic repairs across our district, just to, just to do the basic needs of painting schools and fixing roofs and replacing furnaces in some campuses that were more than 100 years old. And we also knew that we wanted to finish the Paharo Valley campus, because in the initial bond that was put forward, there wasn't enough money to finish the campus. So the Paharo Valley students and parents were instrumental in helping us to pass the bond. It was those kids that knocked on doors, that walked with us, and that really helped to pass Measure L. And I want to thank them for their efforts. Unfortunately, that was five years ago, and the kids that helped us are now graduated from high school, so they did not get to see sort of the outcome of their activism on this issue. There's, some of their siblings are still at the school, and so I'm really excited and pleased that this has come before you, because as Mr. Beecher said, it's been very difficult to explain the inner workings of the grownups who have to deal with bureaucracy and problems and getting to a yes vote with the Watsonville City Council. So I just, on behalf of the trustees, the parents and students, I want to thank this commission for your support of this project. I want to thank the Watsonville City Council for hopefully passing this amendment to the permit, and I want to thank the Watsonville Pilots Association for their support of the project very, very much. And in addition, I'd like to thank our hard-working staff, both the Watsonville city staff and for the Paharo Valley staff, who we, we're running them on a skeletal, skeletal crew still, and doing just a tremendous amount of work in our district trying to improve things. And so, thanks, everybody, and I thank you for your support tonight for this amendment.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak?
First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for all the work you do, and I'd like to thank both parties, the city and the school district, for collaborating on this project and moving it forward. I think we're finally taking a step in the right direction, and I, you know, also would like you guys to vote in favor of the staff's recommendation, in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Felipe Hernandez, First District.
Hello, my name is Joe Manfree. I'm the Athletic Director at Paharo Valley High School. This is my fifth year at the school. I didn't, I never thought I'd see this day, but I know there's still things that need to happen, but I'm really glad this is going forward. I'm on the front lines every day, trying to convince kids to play sports that we don't play on our own campus, which is a, which is an uphill battle and a struggle. I played two sports when I was in high school, played in college, and it was, it was, it was a very fun time. But having to bus to Watsonville for track practice and play home games for football at Cabrillo, and play our home baseball games at Watsonville, and our home soccer games at Watsonville, there, those kids, it's, it's a, it's a struggle to try to get kids out for sports. I think this will make my life a lot easier once this happens and goes through, a lot more, not, not a lot more stress, but just having to, my mom runs a snack bar for the football team, so not having to haul stuff in a truck over to Cabrillo, and being able to set up on our own campus and give these kids a sense of pride, and like Kim talked about, the siblings of kids, my brother went here, my sister went here, my cousin went here, to see this happening, it's, it's awesome, so thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Evening Commissioners, my name is Jenny Veach Olsen. I'm sorry for my tardiness this evening, but I would just like to comment that I really appreciate that this has come forward that, this evening, and that all three parties involved are in agreement on moving the project forward, and I, I would hope that the Planning Commission accepts the recommendation and moves it forward, and I am excited to see this project, both for our community and for the students, and that it's been a long time coming, so thank you.
Thank you. Others? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to discussion for the, by the Planning Commission, Commissioners. I'll start down at Commissioners Sarmiento, and then Montesino, and then Rivera? Okay.
Thank you. I would like to say that although I am right now sitting, representing District One, I live in District Four, which is right next door to the school, to PV High. So I'm really excited that even though it's taken this long, and perhaps the communication wasn't clear at the beginning of the agreement between the, the school district, the city, and all the other parties, that we are here right now looking at this project. And I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we accept this and recommend to city council that it, they approve it, and that finally PV High gets their, their field and their, their fully, with their, with their sports arena, not arena, but field, and able to participate just like any other school.
I'll second that motion.
Let me, we'll get, first, can we get the comment from Commissioner Rivera? Because we, okay, Commissioner Rivera, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I know that this has been a long process full of lots of growing pains, but I'm very happy that all of the involved parties have come together and finally reached an agreement. So I'd like to thank the city and the district, and I'd like to thank the Watsonville Pilots Association as well. So I am all in favor of this, and I'm, I'm ready to vote.
All right, seeing as we have a, a motion and a second, may we have roll call, please? Dana?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes, go Grizzlies.
Sarmiento?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Camer?
Yes. Motion passes. And let me say, I would like to make a comment. When this goes to the, to the city council, I would like to encourage those of you, the adult, adults, to encourage the, some of the students to come, because as a commissioner, it's, if I were a council member, I'd like to look out there and see a lot of support. And as a commissioner, I'm sitting here going, huh, there's, you know, I heard a couple of people, but it would be really nice to have, you know, first of all, to, to encourage young people to get involved in the political process, especially at the local level, because this is their city, to see how city government works, but also to express their views, and to know that their voices are heard, and that their voices are important, because they are the future of, you know, of our world, really. So it would be nice to encourage some young people to come and, and speak, so I would like to throw that out there. So thank you.
Report of the secretary.
I've actually put together a quick and dirty presentation. If, Elena, can you pull it up? I can read all these off to you, or, or you could actually look at them as we go through.
Thank you, everyone, it got approved, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Maybe, you know, when it goes to council next time, they won't be on spring break, so.
That's true, that's true. That's true. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys an update on, on kind of all the projects and where they are in the pipeline, as I've just given this to a Sentinel reporter, so I believe there's going to be a story going out about projects that are going on in the city in the different phases. city and the different phases. So, this first slide is just major projects that we're reviewing and planning and you saw two of them tonight. The next one in probably the next month or so will be, not Sunshine Gardens, but Sunshine Vista, yes, on five, eleven Aloney Parkway. Next slide. So, there's major projects that have been approved by planning in the past year or two but haven't submitted a building permit application yet and that's 49 units on 221 Airport and then the second hotel at 1715 West Beach, so, waiting on that. And then those projects that are, have submitted for building permits, we've got 1482 Freedom, the Marin Street Town Homes, One Western Drive, the Four Shory Hotel with 80 rooms, the Fairfield Inn on West Beach, the retail portion of West Beach, and then we've got four cannabis manufacturing businesses doing tenant improvements. And the Fairfield Inn is ready to issue, so that could go any day. And then lastly, projects under construction. Of course, we've got the Beer Thirty and the Restaurant and Flex Space at 45 Aviation. We've got Blackbird Town Homes, Nordic Naturals doing their expansion, the terraces, you know, Lakeside Organics is just finished and then Sunshine Gardens is underway. And just yesterday, Popeyes pulled their building permit to go in next to the Santa Cruz Credit Union attached to grocery outlet on Main Street.
Are we looking at any parking, driving improvements in that little area? It's just horrible.
I know, I know. You have to be really, really strategic. You know, we've looked at that old Longview Drive and you've got, yeah, it's, it's kind of like this unofficial drive along Main Street through parking lots and I know that's, that's going to be a long-term issue that definitely needs to be fixed, especially coming in and out of the grocery outlet or even coming out of the, the other sides on the fish house.
That's even worse, coming out from the other side.
Yeah.
The two projects that we've approved but haven't submitted building plans, do we know what's going on there? Have we, have they, have the applicants communicated, communicated anything to you?
Well, I know on, sometimes it just, it just takes a while for them to get there. I know on 221 Airport, that's Raed's project, so right now, he's got, he's working on the Marin Street Town Homes and then he will probably, you know, once that's kind of underway, we'll, we'll get the plans in for, for the airport.
Isn't there a, isn't there like a year from the time?
Two years. They've got two years. Yeah, 24 months, to be exact.
It looks like they're, they're working on airport, right? I mean, they've taken buildings down and it looks like a worksite.
They've gotten a demo permits and I believe they've been doing some light site grading, but there's.
I don't see anything on Marin. That's the one I don't really.
They, they've done a lot of improvements and then it stalled and they've just recently pulled the permit to start again, yeah.
So, I, I got a question on the 445 Main Street, is, that's the one being built currently, right?
Yes.
And question, concern, it's not going to be a restorative?
No, these are market rate units. You should, go, go check out their website. Yeah. No, it's, they will have retail on the first floor and it's, it's, it's 54 market rate units.
And they're fully furnished, correct?
No.
Oh, they're not?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Great, I mean, I mean, we should be highlighting that kind of stuff, even if the city council does planning commission because that's the market rate that we want to attract, especially for downtown area.
It's great.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that's going to be an awesome place. It looks, it looks awesome from the outset, but just concerned.
It's looking really good.
Yeah.
Hopefully, he'll give tours.
But a question, because, you know, I don't know the whole process, can, in, in a future meeting be just a process-wise, how, you know, how long a project takes or what are the timeframes that, you know, or, or can we ratchet up some timeframes? You know, just a question, you know, because it takes so long and our housing need in our community right now is like, you know, we used to live two, you know, two families to a house, now it's three families to a house. Just, you know, there are overwhelming parking, you know, sucks everywhere, everywhere you go, so, just.
Is, you know, it's, it really depends a lot, the timeline, we've gotten projects through, larger projects than that through in, in a fraction of the time. It just really depends on, on what project we start with, the response time for the applicant and then going back and forth. In, in this case, we had a change of designer in the middle of the, in the middle of the process and then we had just months of, of lag time in between submittals, so it usually doesn't take this long. I think we processed the 49 units on Airport Boulevard in about four months.
Okay.
I would say, I would just add to that, in real estate, the developers right now have every intention of getting these homes to the market as fast as they possibly can, so. And if the market does change, you'll start to see a real slowdown in all of these, so, we better hope the market at least continues the incentive to keep these fellas and ladies building.
Yes.
Are we going to have a Rena presentation, like maybe the next meeting or something?
Yeah, what I'm, I'm working on for both Planning Commission and council as well as staff is an update to, we just did our Housing Element Annual Progress Report and I want to put together just a brief presentation to go over, you know, updating, highlighting how well we've done in meeting our, our Housing Element goals as well as just an overview of the state housing bills that were passed last year and then there's some good news on, on federal housing funding for this year. Surprise, surprise. Some good news coming out of the White House. We actually have increased funding for, for affordable housing, so, stay tuned.
See, one, one final thing, I don't know if I was dreaming or what, but a few months ago, you said something about the Planning Commissioners being able to attend a workshop or?
Yes.
Right? A conference?
The conference, yeah. I've, I've gotten back to Anna on this and unfortunately, I, I do not have good news. I was waiting to get their agenda to figure out what day we could get tickets to and by the time they sent out their agenda, they had a waiting list of 50 people.
Oh, okay.
So, I apologize heartily, but I will keep looking for, for opportunities for you guys. Yeah, I was, I was really bummed when I found that. I was like, wait, wait, you just, you just posted the agenda and I'm, we're down the road from you, how could you do this? So, apparently, it is a very, very popular event, but if they have anything similar to that or anything in the area in the next year.
And when is that?
I'll be sure to jump on it. That was the Planning Commissioners Academy and it was the League of California Cities, yeah.
It's end of, towards the end of this week.
Oh, okay.
But coming up is the Farm Workers Housing Study Forum in a few weeks and I did just email around the, the actual study, which, just reading the executive summary, which is only four pages near the beginning, there's a lot of interesting information about the current state of farmworkers in the area and what their needs are and how much housing is needed.
Well, thank you, everybody, and meeting is adjourned.